I was my mother's nightmare at times. On Mother's Day, that's especially important. I was my father's disappointment at times. But thankfully, I was always the apple of my heavenly Father's eye, just like you are, and you, because He keeps His hand on us and He keeps looking at us. In 1984, I received Christ on my living room floor, and I'll tell you a little bit about that, more about that later. But at that point in time, or shortly thereafter, I started receiving Scripture and, of course, digging into the Word. And one thing that kept occurring over and over again, a constant theme, is that Philippians 1:6, "He who began a good work in you will be faithful to complete it." I had no idea what that meant, and I found myself wondering, well, like, when was that that you started the work? And found myself in 1994, just shortly before that ministry was launched, New Wine Skins, at my kitchen sink washing dishes, as so many moms do. I had two young children at the time. I will tell you, I have two grown children. I have eight grandchildren, and in April, I became Gigi. That was wonderful. What a blessing. So I'm standing there at my sink, and I'm doing my dishes. It had to be the school year, during the school year, because I was doing the dishes, and I had this terrible allergy on my arms. So I would only, I would do dishes during the school year, and then my kids did them in the summer. They'll tell you it was horrible punishment, but for me, it was just healing time. So I'm doing my dishes, and I was just calling out to God, "What does it mean? You'll complete the good work. You started in Me. And when exactly did you start that?" And I was listening to some of my favorite music, which was by Lori Wilkie. I don't know if any of you have ever listened to Lori Wilkie, but she has this beautiful song from Zechariah 4:6 that says, "Not by might and not by your power, but by My Spirit," says your Lord. And I listened to this, and it said, "You may think that I've forgotten what you're dreaming of, but Cindy, how can I forget the one I love?" And I would bring that word to you today. How can He forget what you're dreaming of? So I realized at some point in time that my call was to be a victorious leader. I was feeling like I had broken dreams, that I really didn't have any place for any of my dreams, but I was called to be a victorious leader. Only thing is, my past said that wasn't going to happen, right? One of my mountains was feeling of inadequacy. The very thing that I felt made me unqualified. God showed me qualified me the most. Isn't that good news? That's really good news. So I started in pretty humble beginnings. I was born in California. My mom and dad, we were probably lower-middle class, or upper-lower class. Mom and dad worked all the time. My dad worked at a concrete plant. My mom worked at a factory most of my early childhood. But we were able, about the time I was four and a half, to buy a home in California and to begin living the life, whatever that is. But there was no mention of Christ in my life. My mom was raised Catholic, but my dad was her third husband, and so the Catholic Church, I guess, wasn't very welcoming of that. And so we didn't see any Catholicism in our home. My dad was raised Lutheran on Easter, and so that kind of took shape later in my life, but not at that point in time. So there was no mention of Christ in my home. However, there were seeds planted and watered along the way. I'm so grateful and thankful for that, because when I look back, of course, at the time, I didn't realize, but when I look back, I see how much God really had His hand on me. I can answer the question now without a doubt that He began the work when He knit me in my mother's womb. And that's great news, because I got to tell you, like I said, sometimes I was my mom's nightmare. So it was a good thing that He had a great plan for me, right? So as a child, each of my parents was married four times. My parents divorced when I was nine, and life as I knew it was pretty much turned upside down, became chaos and confusion. I was a pretty avid reader pretty early in life, and I was the oldest of four of us in my immediate home, but I had three older siblings as well that transitioned in and out of our home every once in a while. So I read, in third grade, I read these books about Earl Stanley Gardner, or by Earl Stanley Gardner, about this amazing attorney named Perry Mason. Anybody ever heard of Perry Mason? I was absolutely convinced I either wanted to be an attorney like Perry Mason or a private eye like Paul Drake. But then, I was pretty sure, I think the attorney's the way, because my mom used to say, "Boy, you sure can argue. You better be a lawyer," or something. So that was a really deep-seated dream. Lord, could I ever become that? There was no money in my family for that, and there was no one in my family had ever gone to college even. And so, but kids will dream, right? Yeah. You know what that reminds me of? God tells us to come to Him as children, no matter what age. When we're with Him, we can dream. I love that. So I go through my childhood with people transitioning in and out. My dad's, my dad was my mom's third wife. My dad married after my mom to his third, my dad, da-da-da-da. My mom was my dad's second wife. My dad was my mom's third husband. Had that mixed up a little bit. Hard to keep track of. I tell people, I really don't have a family tree. I have a family bush. And it's really true. I had siblings, sisters and brothers, and stepsisters, and stepbrothers, and half-sisters and half-brothers, and they moved in and out of my life. At last count, I think I had about 13 siblings. But please, don't quote me on that for sure, because I, sometimes that changes. I don't know. Now that both of my parents have passed, I believe that we won't be having any more siblings. But that was my life. So I had a lot of years of confusion. It turned my life upside down. We had to move out of our home before my, or right as my mom remarried, and we moved to another community that was kind of rough, and I tried to hold it together. A lot of nights of sleeplessness. My dad moved back to Nebraska, and so that was a huge void in my life. I was really close to my dad for a lot of years, and so him moving away was horrifying to me. But, and what happened was, I started getting a lot of uneasiness and anxiety, in addition to those things that teenagers normally get. And I started acting out at home. I started, I would run away. I was doing really well in school, though. I could run away and still pull an A, so that was really the Lord looking after me. At some point, as I was going through all this, my mom, she told me my hair was making me evil. I don't, I'm not sure how that worked. But she cut my hair, because it was making me evil. And of course, cutting my hair didn't do the trick. So, and I acted out even more than ever, and my mom put me in juvenile hall. Now, at that time, you could just, it's called a status offense. You could just be put in an institution like that, because mom can't handle you. And that's what that was for. I hadn't committed any crimes or anything, but I was 14 years old, and I was looking at being there perhaps till I was 19 years old. Can you imagine? In this, in this place where there were kids who committed crimes. And actually, in some ways, I was really excited about that, which, when I look back, I don't exactly understand that, except that it was a structured environment with people who I didn't really care if they cared. And that was kind of different. My dad, he sent for me and had me come to Nebraska, and of course, were gracious enough to allow that to happen. And at the time, he owned a bar, a tavern, in Wahoo. So I had complete culture shock. The whole town of Wahoo was smaller than the junior high I was in for population, so that was culture shock. And my dad was so opposite. He was so hands-off in our home. My mom, she couldn't handle me, because she had, by then, five other children behind me, and she was concerned that I would harm them or cause them to turn the wrong way. But also, I think her heart hurt every time I went missing. I didn't realize it then, right? But now I look back, being a mom has been a wonderful thing, and I understand the pain that I put her through. And I will tell you this, that my mom and I, our relationship was restored at a time, and we were very best friends at the time that she passed, and I'm so grateful for that. But at the time, I was just kind of awful. I was awful. And she put me in this institution. My dad sent and had me come back, and I went wild, because I really, while my mom was, had so many children behind me, she wasn't really parenting me much while I was at home. I actually found out, found myself parenting the younger children, and then when I go to my dad's, there's no parenting at all going on. He and my stepmother were both alcoholics, and so there was a lot of fighting. There were nights where I was called home from a friend, because the police were at my house. It was, it was very chaotic. I guess that's the easiest word to put on it, chaotic. And I was, started just making decisions. Again, my dad moved us to Lincoln, and he grew up here. So he grew up down on 23rd and Dudley, and I am so blessed. My grandma's house, I actually own my grandma's house now on 23rd and Dudley. So it brings me warm fuzzies, because my grandma was really an amazing woman, and she prayed. And I appreciate that she prayed during all that time. So I came to Nebraska. I'm not parented. I'm just going crazy, just going crazy. I'm in Lincoln. I can't stand my circumstances. I'm concerned. I've got all the hormone stuff, plus all the emotional stuff, plus all the abandonment stuff, and I don't have God. And that's a pretty, pretty much a perfect storm. I was making very bad decisions, and I chose to drop out of high school, and I began to live on the streets of Lincoln. And it was a time of so much emotions and sleeping. I did couch tours. I slept on benches in parks. I slept in a doorway. I got actually picked up sleeping in a doorway in what is now my city council district at 27th and Vine. So I believe God was praying over me in that particular area. I also slept in people's cars. In fact, I'm so privileged to tell you that today, there is a man in the audience who is part of my story during my homelessness, Jim Lynn. Thanks for being here. Jim worked the night shift at Virginia's Cafe. Anybody know Virginia's Cafe, right? Yeah, also in my district, by the way. He worked the night shift graveyard, and he let me sleep in his car while he was working. And he was just such a precious friend, and I appreciate having his friendship through all these years. He's seen me in the worst of times and the best of times, and I appreciate longevity of friends like that, right? So I slept on park benches. Sometimes, I remember one time, I think he brought us some food, and he brought us 10 hot dogs. There were two of us out there, and I thought, "Oh, God, if I eat these, I'm not only gonna be, I'll be sick and homeless," but I was pretty hungry, so I made a couple of them. I put a couple of them down. So that was really a rough time in my life. Still, though, there were seeds being planted. And as I look back, now I can see, well, wait a minute. When I was, when I was still at mom's house, there were six of us. She was overwhelmed, and somebody in a bus ministry knocked at our door and said, "Hey, we'd like to take your kids to Vacation Bible School for a whole week." Mom said, "Couldn't get us out of the door fast enough." "That's a perfect idea." And those folks planted seeds and had us, and I was a little bit of an overachiever even then, and so they had to challenge us to memorize Scripture. So had some Scripture in my heart, and that was really wonderful. Well, when I was homeless, I fell in with some folks who got in a little bit of trouble, which is probably an understatement. But I was very near being in trouble myself, and I decided that I was going to go to Job Corps. And so as I prepared to go to Job Corps, this amazing couple became my sponsors. Their names were Ed and Lois Weaver. They owned Weaver's Potato Chip here in town, and they were amazing Christian couple. Loved the Lord with all their hearts, shared Christ with every person that they came into contact with. And I was kind of cynical, but I know that they were meeting my physical needs. They were meeting some emotional needs with me, and they were sharing Christ. They were sharing the love of Christ in a way that I really had never known. They were putting into my life, pouring truth into my life. And they said to me, "Cindy," they got to know me. They got to know my dreams, my ambitions. They got to know my failures, as I felt, and they said, "Cindy, you know, it doesn't matter whose choices have gotten you to where you are today, even if they're your own. What matters is the choices you make from here on out can forge the future for you. They're so important." And so I took that to heart. I wish I could tell you, a great big light bulb goes off. Life is beautiful from there on, but no, that didn't happen. But it was a light bulb about not getting into trouble, making choices as far as my behaviors, so that I wouldn't preclude some of the dreams. Somewhere in the back of my heart, I still had some of those dreams. High school dropout, homeless, wants to be a lawyer. Really? Well, that's where we get to the rest of the story, right? Went through Job Corps and met my very best friend, Julie Talbot, and we are still best friends today. At the time, we were just kind of rabble-rousers together, came back to Lincoln, lived together homeless on the streets for a short while. And basically, I was feeling, I was just drifting. I didn't know what was real, what life was about, what was my purpose. I didn't have a relationship with either of my parents. I felt like kind of a lot of things had been stolen from me, and I blamed them, because they were the ones that brought chaos, right? But you know, then I got married. I was going to be a mom. At least I was, I could get that dream, right? So I became a mom. My kids were growing. Early in my marriage, we separated three times. We were separated three times in our first five years. And it was, it seemed hopeless and helpless, and I didn't know what's up. And I lost a friend, a young friend, who died when I was 25. And then my best friend, Julie, enter her, she had began a wonderful relationship with Jesus Christ, and she, when I lost my friend, sent me a booklet about why people grieve. And I actually took out a Bible. So now, the Bible I had, I'm pretty sure my mom gave it to me just to get it out of the way, because she couldn't figure, it was one of those great big family Bibles. Anybody had one of those? Nobody opens it, except when they write a name in it. And so we did have one of those, and so I started opening that and reading that, and my kids were at their dad's house. And God, the Holy Spirit moved on me, and right there, on my living room floor, I received Christ as my Savior. Yeah, hallelujah, right? My God came in and reminded me that I will complete the good work I've begun in you. Still didn't know what that meant, but it was good. So fast forward to 1994. God has healed my marriage. He's brought us to Nebraska. Well, I should say brought us back, because we made a couple travels to and from. We're struggling, I don't know, financially, too much month at the end of the money. I say that a lot. What I know that God revealed to me during those times of need, when I was on the streets, and during those times, early in our marriage, was He showed me that there's a big difference between need and want. And He would use that even up until today. Everything He did, everything I went through, He has used. And at some point during that time, God showed me the Scripture in Joel 2:25, excuse me, 1, in Jeremiah 29:11. "I have a plan for you, Cindy. It's a plan to prosper you and to give you a future, and I hope..." I said, "Really? What about all that?" And He said, "That's okay." He said, "Joel 2:25, 'I will restore to you the years that the enemy has stolen.'" Wow, right? Wow. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. I don't know what that means, but that sounds really great, right? I'll sign up for that, God. I knew I felt like a lot had been stolen at that time. And then we come really to the rest of the story. 1994, my kitchen window, laying down my dreams. I'm saying, "Okay, God, you said you'd restore it. This must not have been a dream that you had for me. I get that. You know, maybe it's time to just move on and look for what's God's purpose. You have a plan for me. Clearly, it's not the plan I have." I don't know if any of you mothers have ever felt like, "Wow, I'm just a mom. I mean, I'm just being a mom." He said, "Hold on." That was my greatest job, right? That was my greatest ministry, get those kids raised up. And he, I just laid down, and I, so I, I just basically mourned the dream as I went through being the best mom I could be. "Lord, show me where you want me." He put me in ministry with some amazing women who were willing to pray, and we prayed together, and we really reached out to make other women be the most they could be. Like, our, our dream was to help them become victorious leaders and ministers in their, where their passion was. And all the while, I'm just mourning my dream, just like you would, the loss of something very important to you. And then God started moving those mountains. And I am telling you, He did not just open doors. He busted open doors. Anybody know what I mean? Lord, thank you for those mountains being just shoved out of the way. And not only am I doing ministry, but now I started back in school. I was 38 years old, and my daughter was a senior in high school, sophomore in high school, I'm sorry. And she turned 16. And one day, I'm driving in my minivan, and I look in my rearview mirror, and I realize that my car is totally empty, because I've been the ride for a couple of years, and they all have cars. And I said, "Lord, you need to help me here, because I think all my friends are 16. Maybe I need to move on a little. Maybe I need to move on." So I did, I moved on, and I was thankful to the Lord for that, and He started kicking open these doors, and I went back to school. And I'll tell you, I went back to school right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I went to Southeast Community College, and I had some classes I had to pick up, because I was a high school dropout, right? I remember going to a city council, or excuse me, a school board meeting once, and going up and talking about some family issues, and the folks talking to me and looking at me as if I was less than them. And I remember God just raising this up in me. "You are a child of the living God. These people got nothing on you but a degree." Well, God can take care of that. So Southeast Community College, got my, my first two years completed, got those high schools, went on to the university, and then from the university, worked at the legislature as a legislative aide to a state senator, and then on to law school. And I can tell you, God kicked open those doors, and He scholarshiped me the whole way through. Yeah. My God will meet every one of my needs. I will stand on His promises, because He has a plan for me. And His plan's way better than mine ever was. Thank you, Jesus. So I get out of school. Wow, what? I'm a lawyer. Wow, what? I'm a lawyer. That's the dream of my dreams, right? Well, maybe that was part of it. I think part of the dream of my dreams also, which I hadn't even really been in touch with, was that I wanted to hold public office. I know this, because in fifth grade, I ran for class president. And I won, and it was totally strategic. There were eight boys running, and I thought, "Well, they'll split the boys' vote." There were 100 students in the class. "They'll split the boys' vote. I'll get all the girls, except the eight that have crushes on the boys." And I won by a landslide. So that was pretty amazing, right? Yeah. So when my grand, any of my grandkids now say, "Oh, Grandma, are you going to be president?" I say, "No, already was. Been there, done that. That's all I want to do." So I appreciate, I appreciate that the Lord brought that to fruition. And then I had the wonderful privilege of working with a Supreme Court Justice as a clerk for two years. That wasn't even in my wildest dream, because God's plan is so much greater than we can even imagine. And His, yeah, right? Amen. Yeah, so much greater than we can even imagine. And then I started practicing with a very prestigious firm here in town, which was really, really amazing. And then in 2010, because of some of the clients that that firm was taking on, that I couldn't agree with in my spirit, being a pro-family advocate for so very long, I left the firm in my partnership year. I said, "Lord, where am I going to go?" And He said, "Hey, I gave you the magic ticket. It's called a bar card. You can do it." And I went into private practice, praise God. And as I'm in private practice, and I'm doing what I love to do, and I'm being in front of courts and magistrates, and I'm testifying at legislative hearings when needed, and I'm just kind of then sitting back and being mom and grandma and doing life. And in 2014, I started being really concerned with things that were going on at the city, some things I was seeing, and I started trying to recruit somebody to run for city council in my district. Now, I live in the Northeast District, which means it's everything north of O Street and east of 27th, but it actually, north of Superior, it goes all the way west to 14th Street. So that's a pretty big district, right? And I'm really looking for someone to run, and I, and I'm not the only one looking. And God woke me up one morning and said, "You can stop looking. You're it." What? Really? And then I, then I said those words. I professed those words to another friend of mine who's in the audience, my friend Chris Beckenbacher, and she said, "Well, let's get started." She took out a napkin and started writing our plans, and I said, "Really? Oh, my gosh, this is really, really happening." And I walked my district, and I shook a lot of hands, and Chris and I worked, worked very hard. She and her husband Jeff both worked extremely hard for me, along with a lot of other people. And I walked through my district saying, "You know, God, I don't know if you're in this for me to win it. I mean, I don't know why I'm here, but I know somebody needs to hear my story." And so that's what happened. I spent the time sharing my story with voters, sharing my concerns for a government that puts the proper priority of wants and needs, and prioritizes them right, and provides for the safety of its citizens. I walked through the district. I don't know how many hours I walked, but I remember walking through when I was having time that no one was answering their doors, or I was in between. I was singing the Smokey and the Bandit song. You know, "Eastbound and Down, Loaded Up and Truckin', we're gonna do what they say can't be done," right? Yeah. And with the help of the Lord and with the Spirit of the Lord, I won that district race. I am so blessed by the amazing people. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And the story gets better, because right then, I felt like I was walking in an Ester Anointing. It had been prophesied for me, over me, in fact, right there at that altar, a few years before that, that I was walking in the Ester Anointing, that I was there to bring truth to save the people. Bring truth. I'm not going to save them. Spirit of the Lord will do that, just to bring truth. And I have walked in that, and I feel like, and I've recently started reading this book by Lisa Bevire called Girls with Swords. Okay, I'm a girl with a sword. And I want you to know, it's a sword of the Spirit to divide the truth from the darkness, the light, to bring the light to City Hall. And in fact, God had told me, as I'm moving into my next venture, God had told me, "Cindy, this isn't about elected office. This is about our relationship, me and God the Father. This is about Him parenting me in a way that no one ever could, about Him seeing the best in me and the best for me, and knowing my dreams, and saying, 'Hey, I know your heart gets tired, your heart gets weary. Sometimes you think, how long do I have to wait? But let me tell you what, when God's love comes in, you'll be strong again.'" That's my God. And He said, "Not only is it our relationship, but it's about me walking into City Hall, carrying the gospel into City Hall, treating people with the respect and dignity that they need to be treated with, that they deserve, because they're children of..." that they need to be treated with, that they deserve because they're children of God, whether they accept that or not. Knowing that every time I touch someone's desk or have a conversation with them, I have opportunity to spread the love of God, even as I'm working in that worldly realm to try and bring truth in dark places. And that's what I'm doing. So God has taken me through all that. Now I'm sitting on the city council. I have elected office. I'm an attorney. I have an amazing family who all live on my street, except the two oldest kids, just so you know. Oh, and the grandbaby, the great-grandbaby doesn't live on my street. But I feel like I am of being of service to the people in my city of dreams. See, Lincoln is the city of my dreams. Not because I always had it cushy here or not because of the shiny baubles that we have. And we have a few and they're really, really shiny. They're really beautiful and we have wonderful things happening here. But because this is where God brought me through His plan for me. This is where God answered my dreams and put wheels in motion for me. This is where God can do that for you too. If He hasn't already, or if you haven't seen it already, you need to know He's working behind the scenes. He wants you to dream again. Some of you may have laid down your dreams like I did. And that's okay. I mean, sometimes we gotta lay it down to get out of the way because God's got something even better than we can imagine. So I'm feeling today like my story, it's not only about encouragement for you to dream, but it also should be encouragement for every mother who's had a challenge with their teenager. Because when my mom, the last several years of her life, we are the very best of friends and we have conversations like this. And my mom received Christ. And she called me and she said, wow, I'm in the family. I said, woo, cool, I always thought you were. What does that mean? So she received Christ. My dad, my dad's funeral service, memorial service was held right here in this auditorium also. And he received Christ the day before he died. Yeah, and he and I had numerous conversations. I remember the night before, and this is again, the Spirit of God, the night before he passed, I was getting ready to leave his home. And God said, don't leave yet. Go lay down next to him. And my dad always laid on the floor, he had a mattress out there and he'd lay and watch TV. And I laid down next to him and I started sharing with him the gospel again. And he said, you know, I've been thinking about that, Jesus. He was pretty, He did some pretty cool things while he was alive. And I've been watching you and Tim and things are going really, it really seems to have worked for you. And I said, Dad, if you think He did amazing things when he was alive, wait till I tell you what He did when he died. And I shared with him. And he received Christ. And when he died the next day, I had every assurance that he went home to be with the Lord. May have been smelling like smoke, but he went home to be with the Lord. Thank you. As for me and my house, right? We will serve the Lord. That's another promise. The promises of God are so good. And now as I move forward and I contemplate where God's taking me, what's next in my life? Because at this point in time, I'm not doubting anymore. I'm just saying, hey, what's the plan, man? Right? Just give me the plan. And I feel like that I've begun walking into the Deborah story, okay? The Deborah Anointing. And for any of you that have read it, you know probably what I'm talking about. But Deborah, in the book of Judges, Deborah was an amazing woman of God. She was sometimes called the mother of the Israelites. She was a judge. So she was full of wisdom. She divided truth from lies and light from darkness. And she was a prophet, a prophetess. She actually received word from the Lord that said, you need to tell Brock, who was her main, the main guy for the army, I guess, military leader, that God is gonna deliver, that you need to go to war. God's gonna deliver your enemies into His hands. And now you have to understand that they were outnumbered, the Israelites were outnumbered, 10 to 1. Like 100,000 to their 10,000. And I was just recently, I was speaking with someone about this and he let me know. There's even more to understand. This was the beginning of the Iron Age. And there were five nations that were coming together and forging this army. And this army had these most amazing chariots. So they not only had 100,000 soldiers strong, but they had these chariots. And so this was a harsh word. Go forward with your 10,000 guys and God will deliver the enemy to you. And Brock said to Deborah, okay, so I'll go if you'll go. What? I'll go if you go. And of course, she being a woman of great faith and a girl with a sword, said, absolutely, I'll go with you. But this you need to know, because of how you've questioned the order of God, that Cisera, the leader of the other army, will not be delivered into your hands, but into the hands of a woman. And they went forward to this battle and it was a great battle. And the Lord just did exactly like He said He was gonna do. Of course, 2,000 years later, none of us are surprised, right? But delivered the army into their hands. It started to rain. The huge HDB chariots got stuck in the mud. Cisera ran away, ran into a small community. Woman said, here, come into my tent, I'll keep you safe. He went in, she covered him with a blanket. He fell asleep. She took a stake and drove it into his head and killed him. Okay, so I'm not ready to do that. Not physically. But metaphorically, I am about following the directive of God. I'll go where His battle leads me. And I want you to know that I've broken out of the hurtful and confusing things of my past and I'm embracing the fullness of my purpose, that which God has called me for. Thank you. I see Jean giving me the thumbs up. You know, Jean wrote one of the letters that got me accepted into law school. Thank you, Jean. Wonderful, wonderful people of my journey, right? Praying people. And so I would ask you today to continue to pray for me for the next direction that the Lord is taking me in. I am not prepared to say today exactly what it is. But I will tell you, it's way more than I ever dreamed. So God is so very good. And so I would ask for your prayers. God has given me, again, great strategies to have people around me that are just prayer warriors and praying. I wanted you today, though, to know my heart for you in this city, that this is the city of my dreams and that I care deeply for every person in it and that every person be respected and just met with dignity. And I am continuously getting letters and emails and phone calls from constituents, folks who live in the city. And I am so proud and pleased to visit with each one of them. Sometimes we differ on issues, but that's okay. It's absolutely okay. Because I serve a God who's greater than any issue. And He's about me treating each one of them with respect for their opinion and for going to the Lord and doing what's right. If you ever watch the city council meetings, I know some of you do. But if you watch them, before each meeting or at the beginning of each meeting, we do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we have a moment of silence. And during that moment of silence, I would ask you, if you ever see that, to pray with me. Because my prayer, in addition to what I prayed over what's gonna happen that day, I pray, Lord, please, today, give me Your wisdom, Your will, and Your words to speak. I would ask you to join me in that prayer. I sometimes fall down, meaning that the words I speak perhaps are not exactly what He would want me to speak because sometimes my humanness gets in the way. But I'm just be repentful for that and ask for your prayers in helping me to make that be true. And I would ask you to also pray that through the rest of my journey, that I continue to do what God's calling is, what His purpose is in my life, as a mother, as a grandmother, as a new Gigi. And that you would pray protection for my family as we move forward in this next chapter of our lives and continue this amazing journey where God has restored all that the enemy has stolen and even things I didn't know the enemy stole. And I would encourage you today, if you don't know the God, if you don't know the God that can make all of your dreams come true, can restore all that the enemy has stolen from you, you need to make that choice today, to know Him, to know the Lord Jesus Christ. You need to make that choice because He's got great plans for you, even if you're not paying attention to Him. And He's just waiting for you to turn to Him so that He can make them come true. If you do know the Lord, and I hope you do, and once you do, if you're gonna know Him today, I would just encourage you to continue to search your heart for those dreams. If you have stopped dreaming, start again. He wants you to. You're the apple of His eye. He's got great plans for you. Remember the Scriptures that He has. And of course, we all have so many hidden in our heart. But those that I have mentioned today, those are the ones I go back to time and time again. Promises of God. It's not my might, it's not my power, but it's by Your Spirit, Lord. Thank You, send Your Spirit. And that which You've begun in me, you'll be faithful to complete. And He wants that for you too. I hope that my story is one of encouragement for you. And I do pray that you would use it to encourage others because people can doubt the Word of God or doubt that God exists. But you know what? They cannot doubt my testimony. They cannot doubt your testimony. What you have from God, no one can take from you. God has a plan and He can use you to share it. Thank you very much.